Someone's gonna click. And Mr. P. Carey, you're all set. Have a good meeting.
Thank you very much. Before we get started, all this March 8th continued hearing for the cottages at Old Oak and Bucket to order. We are the zoning board of appeals and this meeting is occurring live here in the select court hearing room and on Zoom and Facebook Live with electronic participation instructions being available on the board's website. I do not have the board's open meeting schedule, do we do? Thank you. Before we get started, we'd like to read, "The Situate Zoning Board of Appeals is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minority communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community." Of course, as I mentioned previously, this meeting, in addition to being broadcast, is also being recorded. All right. Thank you for joining us again. It seems like some significant progress has been made on the plan since we last met. I think how I'd like to proceed tonight is to hear relatively quickly. We certainly don't need to start from the beginning. I think everyone hears somewhat from the broad room. But here, what has been addressed since our last hearing, what has changed? A short explanation of that, we can hear from the town peer reviewer, confirming, denying, agreeing, disagreeing, and then we can go from there.
All right, that sounds good. Just very briefly for the public record, Jeff Delisi, Dan Lovindale is my client. And we got Mark Casey, who's our engineer, on the phone call with us or on Zoom. We have Tricia Van Busker, who's our landscape architect, Jeremy Lake, who is our architect. And then we have Daniel Lacavita, I believe, who's with our traffic engineers.
Very briefly, hearing was January 11th. Can I just pause you for one second? Mr. Smith, I see there, well, you're on video, that you have your hand raised. I, uh, there will be a public... You got a little bit of feedback. Thank you, Jeanine. There will be a public comment portion, potentially more than one, coming up. We're just gonna let the applicant and the engineers give us some information first. More for everyone, not just Mr. Smith, but... Okay, please, thank you.
No worries. Last hearing was January 11th. We left the meeting with some tasks. The engineers were to confer, collaborate on outstanding items. That has been done. There was a deadline set February 22nd to make some middles. Submissions have been made. There really were no areas of any substantive disagreement whatsoever. In fact, I believe that the board probably received something in writing today from peer review, which confirmed that. A final plan was submitted and then another one was submitted earlier this month, which just contained some cleanup issues. Architectural plans, landscape plans were both submitted since the last meeting. Architectural plans really haven't changed. They just were submitted. The landscape plans did have a few revisions. There was a traffic memorandum that was prepared and submitted, and it looks like we checked that box. In particular, the major outstanding item on that was site distance, and we confirmed the safe site distance. So, from my part, I prepared a letter to the board trying to address the issue of waivers. And just kind of the backdrop with that, with the application, we submitted a waiver list prior to the last meeting. We submitted a waiver list and then my letter. I just wanted to state the way kind of I approached it was that we've been working to, in good faith, to address, to create the best plan that we can create for this project, to try and meet as many regulations as we could locally, certainly to comply with state regulations. So the concept really was to work with your consultants to check boxes for town concerns that consultants may have raised. So the way I approached it was I was able to isolate three or four zoning waivers that I thought we should probably specifically address. And then I was kind of viewing it like we would accept the plan and do general waivers from different regulations. I recognize that that might not be the way the board wishes to proceed. And I would want it to signal that it would be open to some form of working session and that works with a draft decision so that we can kind of address it and then bring it to the final meeting, which I was thinking would be in April. So with all that said, Mark can go over whatever the kind of summary is of the plan revisions and then we open it up to the board.
Evening, Mark Casey Sessher. Survey, I'm kind of losing my voice. If anybody doesn't hear me well, give me a signal and I'll speak up more. Basically, we met with myself and my engineer Johnny Mazzia, met with Deb Keller from Merrill, went over any final items. Nothing really substantial. As you all know, when you look at their set of plans, they're very, very, very busy. And there's a lot of information. And I don't, you know, where we make typos or drafting mistakes, I don't say that by way of excuse, but by way of explanation. So we had basically 10 different items that we went over with Deb Keller. We agreed to make all those changes and by way of example, we shifted the location of crosswalk and sheet one. The condition of review of hydrant locations to confirm with the fire department, sheet three. Hydro note for 24-inch pipe, it should have been 18-inch pipe. When I say hydro three, that is one of the stormwater recharge areas for roof runoff. In any event, those are the type of changes that were made. Some of the details, we put notes on the details to make sure that a contractor couldn't misinterpret anything when it comes to actual construction. And other than that, it's housekeeping, maybe some minor errors on our part drafting wise.
Could you, you mentioned crosswalks of reference to a storm. What I heard from that, and I apologize for interrupting, was physical improvement changes that weren't just clarifications or additional information being input into the plan. For physical improvement changes, I heard crosswalks and hydrants. Would you be able to highlight for us any...
Hydrant locations.
Yes.
Yeah.
Would you be able to highlight for us and for the public listening and in attendance, any other changes to the plan that reference the change of physical improvements at the site from our last plan? And I'm not sure that there are any more than that. I think maybe we tweaked road B?
Not on this go around, no.
I think we did, because we made some comments about the inability, maybe from unit 12 or 11 to turn around. And I think it looks like we have corrected that.
I think in prior submission, we said you had set up plans that...
Since the last meeting. Sorry, I should have been more clear. So that is another physical change since our last hearing. I'm asking this as much for the board as I am for the public.
Sure.
So that they can be aware of what has changed. They might not have had the opportunity to review each of the planned submissions that the board received.
Some of the, some of the other things that took place was, as we discussed in our last hearing, Deb Keller made reference to the amount of space between the sidewalks and the cake confirmed.
Yes.
So wherever we have the sidewalk, we have a vertical grid curving now. You know, things of that nature.
Fantastic. Thank you for humoring me there. Also, while we have you, there was a question about a retaining wall in the rear of the unit. I'd want to say it was 20. Did the engineers were gonna take another look at? Was that another physical change?
That, that was, uh, I believe, didn't we give you a cut sheet on that?
Retaining wall, we talked about tying it into the foundations of that unit.
Yeah.
Where needed.
Yep.
And then in other areas stepping it back so that you can construct the foundation and change the elevation of the wall so that it followed along the backyard rather than tying it to that. I think unit 21, 20, we were talking about tying it into the corner.
Yes.
The foundation.
Yep.
But none, it's neither of those, those sound like more structural facade questions. The footprint of those two units hasn't changed since last year. Gotcha. Is that about it, or did I ruin your flow?
Grading changes or just changes to the...
Sorry?
Grading changes and changes to the traffic and whatnot.
There really, there really isn't anything grading wise that got changed, that popped into my head.
I went through this tonight and tried to bring it back.
In Deb Keller's final letter here, if we, if you likely go through that.
Well, you can't just... Yeah, I think, I think it might be more efficient. Deb, correct us if we're wrong everywhere. What we've seen and what I'd like the public to hear is that the, the list of questions and items and areas of concerns that you had previously has been fully addressed. And I, and I think it's those four physical changes that we mentioned, crosswalks, hydrants, some of the attributes of road B, and then the sidewalk and curb spacing have been addressed to your satisfaction. And then the other non-physical improvement changes, which were additional information or corrections of maybe some mistakes on the plan, have also been addressed to your satisfaction.
That is correct. I would add one, I can...
Please.
I think it changed in the bedboard plans where we asked for a turnaround behind in the driveway scenario for units 1 and 2. That has been added to the plan as well.
There's another physical change. And then also, while we have it, and please tell me if I'm ruining the surprise for either of your presentations, I believe that the only outstanding item in terms of our traffic engineers review was confirmation of some sight line numbers at the entrance. And based on materials that I've seen, that has been provided and has been deemed acceptable by the board's side as well.
I spoke with the traffic peer review. I did go reporting, uh, to the town, confirming that you, the site, had been, and felt that they were active.
Fantastic. Before we have some questions from the board and then maybe proceed beyond the plans. And first, I'd like to commend you both. Thank you. You had great success and met the timelines that we gave to you. We appreciate it. It's always nice when things work out this way. Anything else that either the town's peer reviewer or the applicant's engineers want us to be aware of, or I'll speak now, or forever hold your peace scenario by any means, just before we raise any questions and have a little more respect from the board and potentially the public?
Nothing pops into my head.
Sure, someone has a comment or...
Of course, please.
Fellow board members, questions, comments on the changes? We still had a lot to do with the end of the last hearing, but I felt that the outstanding items as it goes to where things are located and what is built and isn't built, the list was relatively short at the last hearing. And I feel like we now have confirmation that that list has been addressed in its entirety. I think now in terms of the back and forth between the engineers and any lingering questions that any of us individually have as to locations and improvements on the plan, I think now's the time. Yeah.
Yeah.
This is very detailed and I'm good with all of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think maybe one more question I have for our engineer is from a stormwater and water resource protection standpoint, are there any protections, construction measures, other improvements, treatments that you feel are appropriate and common and of reasonable cost and whatnot? You understand what I'm getting at? That are out there in the market that are not being utilized or implemented on this site that should be?
I, I feel that the layout of the site, the stormwater design is appropriate. It does have the appropriate and required treatment for each one of the stormwater facilities that they have. Four larger systems and then the drywall systems as well. There wasn't really anything that you can add to that system since they're meeting the standards and the treatment that's required for the property. All of the pavement is going through treatment systems before it's discharged. The one thing from a construction standpoint would be to ensure that the the general permit is applied for through EPA and is the SWIP, the Stormwater Protection Protection Plan, which has been indicated will be provided to you prior to construction, just so that we know and can ensure that during construction, where, you know, because that's when you're gonna have the most land disturbance and potential for erosion or sedimentation to get into the surrounding wetlands. So that's gonna be the biggest, I, I feel to be the biggest concern on the site and making sure that that's managed appropriately during the construction process.
Right. Thank you. Again, for everyone, the, the public, maybe more so than the folks in the town, any relief that is potentially granted through this hearing and through a comprehensive permit is not relief from state and federal regulations. And the most appropriate conversation we were just having is environmental regulations, water protection, air, all of the above. Not relief from state building regulations. None of it. This is relief from town of Situate bylaws.
And we still have to apply to the conservation commission following this permit for notice of intent and order of conditions on the state regulation.
Right.
Which is, so there'll be a whole other level of review for that.
Right. Though I, I guess I should clarify, not only are we not granting any relief from state or federal bylaws, we are also not conducting the review that they are doing it properly for everyone's benefit, ourselves included. Folks that are far more qualified to do that are probably the ones that are reviewing. I... I think, and attorney, I beg, correct me if you think I'm running down the wrong path here, but I think I at least want the discussion, and I'm not sure whether it's the emotion. And I think I want to hear from the public again before we do it. But I think I'm leading towards, even if it's just a strong opinion and it's not a motion, that, that the board starts to think about not approving a comprehensive permit just yet, but confirming that we're comfortable with the plan pending our further review of the waivers and applying the implications of the plan to the waivers that are needed, given our bylaws.
I mean, I think from our standpoint, that I can see it through space, I think we're baked on this.
Right.
This is, this is the plan that we're gonna go with. We don't have four engineers who read sight lines. That's all the mechanics of the development are done.
I think it's but for us seeing a specific waiver request and saying, hey, wait a minute. I don't see that on this plan. We disagree. Which is some conversation we still need to have. Bob, I apologize. Sometimes I just think of you sitting at this same table here. And hopefully, you're not shy about interjecting when I open up the question to the rest of us. Anything from you in that light? Recognize, we're gonna get into more specifics on waivers in a little bit. But in terms of the plan, the engineers?
I know. I, I tried to keep up with all of the back and forth on engineering and changes. And I think, as Deb said, everything's been addressed from a technical standpoint. And it design wise, I'm very pleased with the way the site's developed. I don't have any really comments at all. It expired. I do have a couple of comments, when it's appropriate, on the buildings themselves, not where they're located or how they're situated, just.
Sure. I think now might be a good time, yeah.
Okay. We started out with two distinct building types. One of the two bedrooms and one made it three. We now have a single building type. And admittedly, it's turned right and left. And there's a situation along Old Oak and Bucket where the garages are on the opposite side from the main entrances. And then typically, they're not. So that said, it would be nice if there were a little more variety in the architecture, I think, rather than having exactly the same building kind of marching down the street. That's, again, not something that is a critique, it's just a comment.
Okay.
Basically. The other is a little bit, perhaps, easy to, easy to cure, but a little bit more weighty in terms of approvals. The second floor plan has something called a bonus room. It's the size of a bedroom, the shape of a bedroom. It has a door which allows privacy as you would find in a bedroom. And if that particular design were coming to us for a building permit and we're specifically going through the board health review, which is necessary for a building permit, that room would be counted as a bedroom. So in effect, we would have four bedrooms in each one of these units instead of three. And the septic system would then have to be reflective of that capacity.
So I have some questions on that, and we're gonna ask you one of them as well. But have, since March of 2020, has the board of health or your office had any conversations that things that weren't bedrooms but actually were bedrooms on plans prior to COVID and the work from home world, might actually be more legitimate rooms with doors and closets that actually aren't bedrooms anymore? And I say this, I'm sure there's some other people in the audience. I have a room in my home that has become what it is since COVID that has a door and a closet, and it's not a bedroom. It's, when you walk into it, it's very clear, that's my office.
Yeah. Typically, it wouldn't come to anyone's attention until unless there were changes, either a new house, obviously, or, or an addition, which may contain the bedroom, not new masters from over the garage.
Yep.
In cases like that, it's really universal that we have asked the owner to decommission one of the existing bedrooms if the creation of a new bedroom, you know, needs, needs to, needs to take the place of in terms of septic system capacity needs to take the place of an existing bedroom. With a new house, the same thing, you know, this is, um, I guess the simple answer to your question is no, it really hasn't changed.
Okay.
You know, there's plenty, I totally agree with you. There's plenty of existing homes around that have been used for different purposes.
Sure.
Yeah. So this is, this is a fight that we, builders have been fighting forever.
Right.
Saying that, no, it's not a bedroom. We, there is a definite, there is an existing definition of bedroom. We've submitted a set of plans. Whether we say it's bedroom or not, one, two, three, and everything else is bedroom. This is a lot, a lot of times out of the others. So I agree with Bob that, you know, it looks like a bedroom, smells like a bedroom. It's gonna be counted as a bedroom. Until we say it doesn't have a closet, then it might not be a bedroom. Doesn't have a door, it might not be a bedroom. Until we close our license, everything's better.
Yeah, I understand. Now, yes?
We, uh, the 4B approved recently in Duxford, we have bonus rooms in the architectural designs. And the question raised, what we came up with is, when you look at the... Deb, jump in if you think I'm missing anything, but the Title V definition of a bedroom is for new construction, I believe the ceiling height's gotta be seven foot six or seven foot eight. It's gotta be a minimum of 70 square feet. It's gotta have a door. Remember off the top of my head, it's gotta have a window. But the door means an expectation of privacy. And so what, what we did in Duxford, and Duxford has a local board health regulation. Basically, I'm really paraphrasing here, but it says, if it looks like a duck and walks like a duck and squims like a duck, you're gonna count it as a duck, right? So in any event, what we did was instead of the standard door, we had a six-foot wide opening, okay?
Right.
With no door.
And so it's like to see a piece of this wall that you can cut out right away and call it...
So there's no expectation of privacy.
That's typically what the result is, that, you know. I don't think we needed six. I hope we settled on four-foot case opening being adequate.
You have anything to add?
I would concur, that's sort of my experience as well, that we need to go with a wider opening so that you, someone could just pop the door in that door frame and have it become a bedroom out of the back.
Because, correct me if I'm wrong, if these were bedrooms, or if, say, half of them in the development became bedrooms, that's gonna change your, your wastewater per view.
Correct.
Perhaps significantly.
And potentially, um, they could be going over the 10,000 gallons, which would then be a whole treatment facility and a, brings in a whole host of...
Of course, every different color.
Yes.
Well, it sounds like we have another physical change to the plan being discussed. Advocate, what do you propose again to address this?
Well, I think that until we file a building permit application, the issue is not really germane, right? It's not in front of us right now. So I think that it's probably something that can be dealt with as a condition of approval, which is that it, uh, it, uh, you know, meets the building inspector's judgment of, you know...
Three bedroom hall.
Yeah, exactly.
I think I agree with that. I think that...
And at that time, if there's a discussion, for instance, that hey, Bob says, hey, seems like this is a reasonable amount of privacy for a bedroom, we're gonna need to obviously look at design changes in the interior buildings. But condition of approval that it's... But, um, condition of approval that it's, they're limited to three bedroom units and in the judgment satisfaction of the building inspector.
Right. That, if I may also, one of the other things to me in short, uh, to. Limit the number of bedrooms, uh, was, uh, in the condo docs in Master D. They limited to three bedrooms as well. So the condominium association will have power there as well.
Which has a lot more. No, the co-unit owners have a lot more investigative, if there's no test in your office.
Understood, but it's also, um, ongoing where.
Yes.
We take a snapshot and they're, they're.
That's right. They sure are.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. The, uh, the Master D, Master Plans, we're gonna have to describe the unit.
That's right.
And, uh, that's another area of regulation.
Yes. Tommy and Suzie from the board. Suzie, turn it over. You don't wanna run it out like that.
And, and the restroom here, they usually.
I think now, right?
Exactly.
Some easy cases, right? How do you, you know, what though, not deal with that? Open up the whole condition of closets.
I think it's right. The plan before us is for this number of free bedroom detached homes. If you give something.
You swap a bathroom and a mudroom, that wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily be coming back to us for that. Um. Determines, hey, wait, you're showing me final plans for a four bedroom, then we're gonna have a discussion. Thank you, Bob. Definitely something good to keep in mind. Anything else before we go to the public? We're gonna turn it over to the public comment. Again, to summarize what the board just said. We feel that we're getting there, if not there, on the plan, the location of the physical improvements on the site. We have some more discussion to come about specific relief from town code, that is to be granted. But, um, in terms of public comments and questions, I think we're opening it up as to all of it. There's questions you wanna ask us about relief, let's do that. Comments you wanna make about relief, questions or comments about the physical improvements. Now is the time. Yes, we'll start in the room.
I just have, I don't know if this is the time for the question.
This is the time. Don't worry about it.
We had talked way back when we started and you had explained how you guys take over all the zoning and whatever and other things like conservation, we grant things. We had talked at the very beginning about the water supply, the drinking water and.
Yes.
And the pressure in the neighborhood. And I don't think it's been discussed again. I just didn't know where we stood on.
Certainly.
Water and water pressure and.
Sure, so it, it was, honestly, it wasn't discussed at length and it was some time ago and I'm glad you brought it up because it warrants discussing again. I did have a discussion with DPW and I guess, excuse me, the water department specifically. Regarding this development. I am paraphrasing. Their response was. Listen, we don't have as much water as we would like in situ it. And we don't have as robust of a delivery apparatus for water as we would like. But with that said, this number of units and this conversation occurred when we were at thirty-one or thirty-two units.
That's a large number of units, right?
But this number of units and or this number of bedrooms, taken as a single development. Would not present an issue to the town or to this neighborhood. For water quality and delivery.
So. If my next door neighbor starts her washing machine and I'm in the shower, I can't rinse my hair.
I don't disagree with that.
So I can only imagine when twenty-four houses go in.
I, I don't disagree with that. I understand. I, I. I live in a newer neighborhood development. We've got our problems with water. I can only tell you what I was told by the water department. I think I am by no means an expert. The, the answer was indicative of that, yeah, twenty-four units here or even thirty units here. Aren't going to make your shower and whatnot any worse or better individually. We can absolutely disagree with that. I. I got the answer I got from the water department. Um, and honestly, separate from that, if I had gotten a different answer from the water department. We would have more to discuss and honestly, I don't think it would make any difference.
So.
The, at a twenty-four unit development, even if the water department had told me absolutely not, twenty-four is the number. No more water's gonna come out of the tap in situ it.
Yeah.
We all would've spent a lot more money getting to this point, but I don't think it would've made a difference.
So according to the letter from the state, from Mass Hopping, says the applicant should be prepared to provide detailed information relative to. Those water use potential impacts on existing capacity and appropriate mitigation.
Yes.
Do we have that or will we be getting that?
So we have information on their water use. Correct. Based on the number of bedrooms and whatnot, there's, there's tables and calculations. When I have the water department not telling or telling me that twenty-four units. Isn't going to create a specific problem in town or this neighborhood. I unfortunately. I can't look at them and say, well, I need you to mitigate this problem that the water department told me didn't exist.
But this is for mass housing.
Yes, but I don't think mass housing in that letter was saying. Here's a problem, we need you to mitigate it. I was saying they needed to, I believe that letter saying they needed to be prepared. To mitigate a problem that the town identified. The town did not identify a specific problem with water use or flow with respect to this development.
So can I just ask a personal question? If my water deteriorates?
Yep.
What do I do? Well, if my water pressure gets worse than it is right now?
Yeah.
What do I do?
I, I don't have an answer for that. I think you do what the rest of us do when our water isn't where we need it to be or want it to be. I mean, how.
But I can't get the pressure higher.
Neither can I.
No.
I, I agree. I am not disagreeing with you or saying that your concerns are unfounded. I, you know, if, if you're looking for, for me to counter it or. I listen. I disagree with the water department and I don't think this is what they were saying. What the, is the water system exactly the same down to the twenty-second decimal point? If we're gonna build twenty-four more units? No, one more house makes our water situation worse than no more houses. But. I think I believe, and again, I am not an expert on this and I don't believe we have water resource or the water department here tonight. I think the problem exists with or without these twenty-four units and I think the problem is being addressed. Regardless of these twenty-four units or two hundred and forty units. Is it being addressed fast enough and well enough? I, I don't have the expertise or honestly the knowledge to say that. I believe that that is the town's position and the water department's position. Yes. Jeff?
It's okay, I, um, it's okay. I may have briefly touched upon this in one of the prior meetings. Um, it's a bit of a push and a pull issue from a land use standpoint because the town. M- m- more than the detriment on the water system that these units would create. Needs money to fix the deteriorating infrastructure and the way they get that money. Is by charging a, a per unit fee for water meter and charge, which is thousands and thousands of dollars per meter. And then also.
Not normal water bills, just the new meter.
Hook up your new, the new.
Yeah, we have a sewer, a bucket fee.
And, and, and then the water, the water usage as an ongoing aspect, that's how the town gets its funding.
To pay for the impacts on the water system.
Then I have a follow-up question. Are we doing individual meters or are we doing a meter for the entire neighborhood?
You're gonna have to do individual meters.
Yeah, there are no individual hookups. Okay.
Yeah.
Separate.
No, a lot.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So it's a significant, uh, expense and it's a significant.
That's fourteen thousand, that's fourteen thousand per unit.
Right.
Yeah, it's a significant amount of money.
So the, the concept is, the town uses that to continue its water mitigation project and, you know, fix the pipes and the INI and all that.
Yeah, I want to go on comment. I, I so guess, so that's important, I think, for people to understand. The other thing is, um, to the extent that this. Let's say theoretically does have a significant detriment to the, of the water quality and the water availability in the neighborhood. It, it's not going to be anything superior to anyone else. In other words, if this causes a problem, it's gonna cause a problem for itself. As well as the neighborhood, right? So you run into a situation that if it really is gonna have an impact. You have, again, I don't think this is the case, but you're gonna have a case where, uh, nobody, you know, nobody has water, including. These units here that you just put in there are brand new. So I, I doubt that you guys believe there's gonna be a significant impact. Whether there is one or not, whether there is one or not, I can't.
If, if, if we do the water, if we, if we hooked, if we hooked these units into the water system on Old Oak and Bucket Road and we turn the stick it on. And, uh, our customers won't be able to wash their hair properly. We're gonna be looking at engineered, uh, resolutions at that juncture to try.
They're gonna become your best friends with your water resources, is what he's saying.
With water pressure, yeah.
No one's more invested in water pressure on Old Oak and Bucket than this gentleman right here and the woman sitting in the front row. So. There's an argument to be made that in this specific neighborhood, they might make you walk back.
That would be great.
Yeah, I know.
They may not.
I, but, I, back to the beginning, it's a valid question and I'm glad you asked.
Yeah, but, but, but again, if it's, I, I just don't see a scenario where. Cause these te, these things are not independent, right? There's no way that you build this and you have great water and great water pressure if you are on town water. Um, and, and your neighbors don't, right? It just doesn't work that way. So, uh, I mean, I, it is a concern. It's a concern that you'll engineer around if you need to.
Yes.
So, uh, Patricia, everybody else, who is the chair of the Plague More tonight, uh, we have, um, got out to. Tighten body, you can't avoid it. And we've now specifically asked for all the waters, sorry. It is on the Plague More site. It is as ridiculous as we pay the water money to be told when it rains to have water and when you don't have it, you don't have water. You get the water money to know. With the new structure going along with the water treatment plant, I mean, it's lots of water, it's gonna rain a lot of water. The Plague More is purely a water. My biggest issue is water. We don't have the ability to deny and bring something of water we can get from the soup. So all of this INI stuff is all very intricate, all, all, all departments. Everybody's a team and we all know that over the, this topic of water pressure. So we will be addressing that as well.
Okay.
And Mr. McCary, just so you know, you have two virtual hands raised.
Thank you, Seth. Um.
Lucas has his up for a good long while, so.
Let, let's hear from Luke. Luke, if you can unmute yourself and. And then, and I should've mentioned for everyone, just your name and address for the record as well while we ask your question.
Luke, you should be good to speak. Just state your name and address if you can. Thank you. Luke, you're good to go, my friend. Luke?
Just use the force, Luke. It's pretty easy. Somebody had to do it.
I think.
Page Sharon Drive.
Great. Luke, go ahead. Luke, go ahead with your comment, question.
What does? I have a lot. Everybody.
Hi, Luke.
Didn't you turn on my video?
Get some help with this computer.
Uh, Luke did just turn everything off. I will chat with him. Meanwhile, you have, do have two other hands raised if you wanna take another one.
All right, we'll, we'll come back to Luke if he comes back to us.
You got it, you got it. Kevin, uh, just unmute, uh, name, address, all that fun stuff.
Kevin Marshall, two eighty-two, Old Oak and Bucket. Um, I've got a couple of questions, um, relative to attorney DeLeese's letter of February seventeenth. Uh, stating that, uh, at least two of the units are, are to be cited less than thirty feet setback. And given the fact that, um, the existing structure is set well, setback well more than thirty feet. Why are we allowing units to be built closer to thirty when there would appear to have room based on the existing structure for them to be set back more than thirty feet?
Um, yes, so I, I can address that. The reason we are, well, first, to your first point, where the existing structure is. If this was a typical special permit or raise and reconstruct application. Where the existing home is or isn't would be at play in determining whether or not we were granting a special permit and I'll. Over generalize our bylaws here, which is a lower level of review or a variance, which is a higher level of review. This is not a typical raise and reconstruct. This is a 40B application for a new development. We simply by virtue of the statute do not look at it that, that way. This is an application for twenty-four new freestanding condo units. So the, let's put where the existing home is or isn't in terms of setback from the street to side. As to your question on setback from Old Oak and Bucket, I believe we're referring to, that's unit number four? No.
Two and five, I think.
So.
Unit two, unit two has a setback from the layout of Old Oak and Bucket Road as twenty-five feet, five inches.
And then the one that's real close is unit five?
Unit, unit five.
The one that's real close is unit five. Now that, unit five is very close from the right of way, meaning. The land where the town has the ability to build the road. It is over thirty feet, I believe. From the edge of the pavement. Now.
Fifty feet.
It's fifty feet from the edge of the pavement. Now the bylaw is for a setback from the right of way. So we are absolutely considering, and I think based on the board's comments, strongly considering. Granting relief as to the setback location of that unit. I, and that was, Kevin, I forget his last name.
Marshall.
Mr. Marshall would disagree with your comment that there's ample room to move it further back. There, there's a spacing to these units and other setbacks where it's become a bit of a chessboard. And moving that unit further back from the right of way, which is not a road in terms of reality. Would have a domino effect of affecting something else that we don't want and. And the, the board has considered that and that specific setback was something we looked at more in depth at our last hearing. And which our peer reviewers looked at and we've determined that giving there is better than taking or giving somewhere else and, and.
And just a little bit of history on why we're so close to that layout as opposed to the road.
True.
The town re-curved that piece of road like thirty years ago, so they straightened out that curve. That's why that layout was so far in and the road so far away.
And didn't discontinue the portion. So if they had discontinued it, there, there wouldn't be any relief for that unit. Or as it stands now. Mr. Mr. Marshall, hopefully that addresses your question as to the Old Oak and Bucket setbacks.
And then, uh.
Well.
Units one and two were moved further back from the original proposal.
Yeah, then we were kinda hand-dan, we were trying to respect the twenty-five foot buffer of the border inventory.
Of course.
So that's with respect to those units, there is no other, this, they're as far back as they can be respecting water resource issues.
So if, if, if I'm, if I can.
So if, if, if I'm, if I can paraphrase what I heard, moving it back would mean the developer would get to build less units, so we're not going to force him to move it back? Is that?
That's a, that's a bit of a stretch of the definition of the term paraphrase.
And again, so again, what is it you mean by it? Units one and two were moved further back. Unit five, which is fifty feet from the road, right, is fifty feet from the road. Moving that unit further back, yes, would impact some of the other construction here.
Okay, okay. Another, another question that, because I'm, I'm unfamiliar with this, how these pro- how this process works. Um, is, is, when, when, is there any consideration given to what I will call net additional, uh, affordable units? It, when a, a project is built. For specifically, my question is, where the, the existing structure, which is, I think, a four-unit rental, is going to be torn down? And my guess would be, it's purely speculation, that those would be considered four affordable rental units?
No.
They're not?
Not correct. They are four rental units. They, whatever the owner wants to charge, the owner can charge.
But given.
They're not, they're not defined as a, they are not defined as affordable units either under state law or any other law. So the, the town isn't losing any affordable units in connection with the demolishment of the previously existing structures on this site?
So, okay, uh, and I'll, I'll make this my last question because I don't want to monopolize the time anymore than that. What is the definition of an affordable rental unit per state law?
Well, um, let's just back up. We're not, we're not proposing rental units.
I understood, yeah, so please, go ahead.
So affordable is a, is a way of saying what the state defines as low and moderate income housing. So, uh, there's a definition that applies to that, which I believe is eighty percent of the median home income, I believe, uh, in the town of Situate. So those numbers are established by the state of Massachusetts. And then once they figure out what that eighty percent number is, then prior to any occupancy of any one of these units within this development, there would be a deed restriction that would be placed on all of, uh, this development that limits or, that limits a certain number of units to that definition, which is that it cannot be sold for more than eighty percent of the median home income in Situate.
And, and that value. Income goes to your call, the case of the owner. Then a separate denominator goes to what you can sell the home for.
Yes.
Irrespective of income, yeah. Mr. Marshall, to answer your question, it's laid out by the state. It's, it's part of chapter forty B.
Yeah.
It is like most of our Mass general laws, not the easiest read, and that's what I do from nine to five. But it's, it's not something that's being tweaked or modified or amended here. That's actually part of Mass general law, chapter forty B.
Okay, I, I, I don't really understand it, but I don't know that I need to at this point. I have to take your word for it that it is what it is and it really doesn't matter, uh, given the rents that's being charged in those units, it doesn't come into play. So if it doesn't come into play, it doesn't come into play.
Sure. Then just, just to recap quickly, there are, I believe, four rental units at the property now that will be torn down. None of those are affordable, or there's two, two, really doesn't matter because none of those are affordable units, so the town isn't losing any affordable units to try to get to our threshold. This home attorney, this project, as Attorney DeLeese pointed out, it's important to clarify, will not be any rental units. These will be condo units, which are maybe even a little bit more interesting from what we consider condos in the building. These are actually freestanding, single-family homes that will each be an individual condo unit. Bruce's iPad. I, I mentioned before that we didn't have anyone from Water Resource or the Water Department here and I was incorrect because I didn't recognize Bruce's iPad, but I should have guessed it. Hello?
Yeah, hi.
Please, you can introduce yourself.
Yeah, Bruce Arbenes, twenty-three, Gannapasture Lane in town. I'm also a chair of the Water Resource Commission. Um, this, uh, property is in the Water Resource Protection District and has a fifteen percent, uh, coverage limit, uh, with the exception, of course, that an artificial recharge system sufficient to handle any runoff from the property uh, be implemented. I heard some discussion prior about dry well and, and, um, much of my concern being addressed. I'm just not sure if, about the sufficiency.
Do you speak to that?
Uh, sure, Deb Teller, Merrill Engineers. So actually, all of the stormwater treatment, um, for the site is and are recharged, the NPs or best management practices through subsurface infiltration. So all of the roofs are being recharged, all of the roadways being, and driveways and sidewalks are being treated and recharged as well. There are two, I think of the four, that do have overflow outlets. Other than that, they all will be, um, recharging all of the storm waters, or, or sized up to, up to the hundred-year storm.
So it sounds like, and anyone correctly, I mean, correct, you will not be seeking relief from the section of the bylaw that Bruce is referring to?
We will, uh, yeah. So I, I think Bruce just, I just paraphrased a requirement of the zoning bylaw, which, um, which requires a maximum amount of impervious area of twenty percent of the site in the circumstantory using artificial recharge, which we are.
Okay. So, uh, right now.
Uh, so. But. Yeah, that's for the most restrictive part of the Water Resource Protection District. The part where you're at does not have that twenty percent maximum.
Oh, okay. Um, Mark, you want to wait that for a second?
I, I just wanted to add something. Uh, when we did our stormwater analysis, pre and post-development, uh, what we plug in to the amount of stormwater for these different, uh, storm events, uh, we base on the Cornell rainfall intensity hours. And your subdivision rules and regulations, and it's very common for people to use TR fifty-five. Then TR fifty-five says by way of example, for a hundred-year storm event, you get seven inches of rain. Using the Cornell, okay, which I insist on, okay, means we get eight point eight inches of rain during a hundred-year storm, right? That, so this, this really is, in, in a sense, overdesigned.
But it sounded like you guys flipped positions there for a minute and you were saying you were going to need relief and Bruce might be arguing that you might not need relief.
Well, I don't know if I'm willing to, uh, rely upon Bruce. I'm gonna take another look at it.
Of course.
My, uh, coming into this meeting, we are requesting relief because we're proposing twenty-three percent impervious area in what we believe is, it's what I read to be a twenty percent max. However, um, I, Bruce, I'm gonna be checking that one out.
Of course.
Because I'm certainly not, not a perfect individual.
No, 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 no. It's, it's, uh, moving parts here and we haven't made you finalize that list yet, so that's understandable. Bruce, it sounds like though, even if they have a maximum, it sounds like that has been addressed and it's been addressed to the satisfaction of the town's peer reviewer. Does that address your concerns? In the recharge systems they have in place?
Yes, I'm not an expert, so I would look to, uh, the expertise the town brings to bear. Um, I do have a slight follow-up question, though. There was a discussion or a comment made about overflow uh, points in the system, in the recharge system. I was wondering the location of those overflows, towards the back of the property, towards the front?
Towards the back.
Uh, if, would it be possible to put Plan Sheet one up?
Uh, the, the one, the plans you started today? Yeah.
Let's go. Bruce, pausing for a second. We're gonna bring up a plan of the site so we can answer this question with some specificity. Those children will be living in unit three.
I'm sorry, those, those are my grandchildren.
Yeah, honestly, I think any of the plans might do it for this part, yeah.
Yeah, while you're looking for that, I'm looking at the chart, uh, and I believe Bruce may be correct that, that limitation only applies in zone A.
Okay.
And we're not.
Yes.
Yeah.
Sheet four?
Good catch, good catch, Bruce.
I think what we're looking for is, uh, sheet four, actually. I'm sorry.
Jeff, we'll need to note in the, uh, third-party developer laws that the town of Situate is helping argue that you don't need relief.
Newly noted.
I think maybe more important than showing the public the exact indication of where it is, if the engineers are in agreement, I think we can just point on the main plan as to where it is. And that might be e- enough for Bruce for now, at least.
I think that's.
Yeah, probably worth, because that's just pretty important.
Yeah, you've got, you've got overflow towards the back of the site here and we talked about overflow.
Yeah, okay.
So we don't want dead-end drainage, okay?
All right, good.
Especially for road, road runoff. And then right here, we also have, uh, provided for some overflow, but this is just, uh, you know, controlled runoff, uh, going towards the, uh, towards the wetlands. And again, uh, when we say a hundred-year storm, it's eight point eight inches of rain as opposed to what you would require, which is figuring for seven inches of rain.
Yeah, that's.
So we're over your time.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you, Bruce. Sorry for pretending like you weren't here before. It's, Luke is back.
Uh, we'll try Luke one more time here. We're gonna, Mr. McCary, we're gonna try him one more time. We'll see, um.
Fantastic.
Luke, uh, we, I, I had, um, let's see here, where'd he go? We did lose Luke again, but we do have Vanessa. Would you rather take Vanessa Leary and not work on Luke?
Certainly.
Vanessa, go ahead. Name, address, and your comment.
Hi, Vanessa Leary, two seven two Old Oak and Bucket in Situate. Um, my question is around the traffic concern. I think this was raised at the last meeting, which I had to miss unfortunately. I was just wondering if you can clarify for me how that's being addressed? And more specifically, what I'm interested in, um, is that intersection with Maple. Um, since I would say the fall, um, just between myself and my family members, we've personally witnessed at least ten accidents at that intersection. I don't know that they've all been formally, you know, um, entered into the police database or whatever is used to go into the, um, the traffic research. But that's a major concern for me, even without this development. I'm very concerned about that intersection. Um, I know, you know, picking up my kids and coming from Cushing, taking that left from Maple onto Old Oak and it's just a complete blind spot, and that's where I see the majority of cars just not stopping at all for the stop sign and that's what's contributed to many accidents that we've witnessed. Um, and my concern is two parts, I guess, you know, the number of cars that will be increasingly on the road as a result, but also for the number of pedestrians, you know, there's gonna be kids living in those units. There's gonna be people walking their dogs, jogging, whatever it is. Um, and it's just a, a very, very dangerous street. Um, and then selfishly, I would love your answer to be that you're building an amazing sidewalk, but I don't know that that's within the scope of this meeting. Um, but that's just my concern, is how it's going to be addressed, not only in terms of the, the number of people who are going to be on the road, but also the number of possible people who aren't familiar with the area, who could be victims of these terrible accidents.
Sure. So, uh, that, that was discussed at length in the last hearing and happy to reiterate some of it here. The overgeneralizing the, the reports from the, the applicants and our traffic engineer was that, well, we'll, we'll put the rotary aside, it's further away, but also that intersection, while they are absolutely areas of concern, the twenty-four units that we are considering adding here are not a measurable increase in the concern or the reason for the concern. The problem with that intersection is that people don't stop the way they're supposed to at stop signs or people are really terrible at driving and then can't decide who goes first at a four-way stop sign. It was determined, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the extra twenty-four units here aren't going to make the people that aren't stopping or handling that four-way intersection carefully, handle it any worse. And that if one out of every two hundred people that enter that intersection get into a car accident, the twenty-four extra homes here aren't going to make a noticeable difference in that number. Now that said, we have helped maybe a little bit revive the conversation within the town by way of this application as to address it, addressing traffic concerns at that intersection. Things are being looked at. There are proposals with DPW and the Police Department for potentially some speed limit signs, for some looking at that intersection. It's separate from this development, but that conversation is ongoing and the town and the Police Department and DPW are aware of the concerns. Maybe this is a good point also, just to mention again, and I covered it while we're going over the plan. The other thing, and the more direct traffic implication of this development, is entering and exiting on an empty dot road where sometimes people are driving too fast and where the visibility at certain points on that road, especially if you're driving too quickly, cannot be the best. And the applicant confirmed the sightlines while entering and exiting from the street that is being created here, and our engineers confirmed that those sightlines and those measurements were acceptable.
We've also, correct me if I'm wrong, were, were we going to contribute to the radar freestanding, um, speed units with the, uh, red and blue lights?
Yes.
Locations, locations.
Being determined by the Police Department, obviously.
That's right. There was some discussion of that and those, those are being considered. We, we received a plan from, uh.
Right.
Is that from DPW machine or was that from the Police Department?
From the, um, traffic consultant.
Okay. Uh, that was a suggestion. That was a suggestion. They have, I think, they have to make a decision.
Maple and Winter.
Right, so town has to make a decision.
Town has to make the decision.
A decision. It's not our decision to make.
Right.
But you guys have offered for that, yes.
Part of sidewalks, I happen to live on, uh, Country Way and, uh, a few years ago, the town instructed, uh, sidewalks, which are very useful at times, flawed because there are telephone poles in the middle of them. Uh, but sidewalks on Country Way, and I think that they, they appropriated money from CPC for that and they probably got some money from the state perhaps, I don't know, but uh, they ma- they magically appeared within the layout of the road and were installed by the town within the layout of the road, not on private property. So it's an effort, I suppose. It's, it's not anything that Mr. So it's an effort, I suppose. It's, it's not anything that Mr. Lovendale can do.
No, no. And honestly, the, the traffic issues and areas of concerns that we looked at with respect to the site and neighborhood weren't as much driven by pedestrian traffic.
Yeah.
It was folks not, basically failing their driver's tests on this section of Old Oak and Bucket. It's funny because of how ridiculously terrible it is, right? Driving a little, driving a little too fast is one thing, driving way too fast coming up on that intersection and that stretch of road, and not being able to navigate a four-way stop sign. People should be back, people's license should be taken. It's a four-way intersection, just people need to sort it out, so. Yes?
Can I just have the town person that reviewed the traffic for the town?
Yes.
Did they take into consideration the 26 houses that are being built right over the line in Norwell as far as that intersection?
That was raised, and what goes into the calculations is a typical amount of development, continued growth, neighborhoods and towns that are doing well typically add units and cars and traffic rather than taking their way. Yes?
And that development, I think I mentioned, is entrance to that development is off of the opposite side of that parcel. So cars that are accessing that development are probably more likely to go in the direction of 123, depending on their destination, but it's a.
Again, that, that question goes to the same as the water question, right? We can look at this application and address the implications of this application. If you look at what they're building over there, what they're building over, everything else, we can say, oh my God, there's gonna be too much traffic and out of water, nobody can build everything. The, this, the state and K-Saw doesn't allow us to do that. Yes?
To, just for public information, that traffic report is on the town website.
Fantastic, thank you. Mr. Marshall? Oh, Luke is back, Seth.
Sure, yep, let's try Luke one more time here.
Let's try Luke.
Luke, do me a favor, unmute yourself. Luke, where'd you go? We just, there you are, Luke, go ahead.
I'm muted.
Luke? Luke, I know you can hear me, buddy. Go ahead with your comment.
Can I speak to Vanessa, please?
Oh, yep, sure, yep, we'll get, we'll get that squared away. Mr. We Care, we're gonna move on past Luke, and we're gonna go to Kevin, okay?
My question goes back to, to the letter I referenced earlier, and it's sort of a general question. The letter asks for relief in a number of different areas.
Yes.
The areas that they're requesting relief, are these areas that, and I'm gonna use the phrase, may not be the right way to say it, by right, a 40B gets relief from, it's virtually automatic that they get relief from these things by virtue of the law.
Sure, so that's a valid question. The, the whole classes could be taught on how to answer that question, but, but to try to answer it and, and get us all home tonight, is a 40B development, meaning a painting with very broad strokes of a very long statue, meaning a development, a multifamily development that contains 25% affordable units, has more flexibility in bending and sometimes breaking local bylaws than really any other form of multifamily development I can think of in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. They don't get to just blanketly ignore everything, and they have to spend quite a bit of time and money going through this proceeding where we talk about what relief they need and why they should have it. The town is a bit in a box, and we've talked about it with respect to 40B before, as to how much we can hold them to our bylaws. The, the main standard is what we call economic feasibility. We, and more importantly, perhaps, the state, want developers like this to build multifamily developments that are 25% affordable. And in doing so, 40B says that they have to comply with the town's bylaws as long as those bylaws are economically feasible for the development. And what we as a board, or what us as members of town or neighbors think is economically feasible, isn't always the way the state and developers define economic feasibility. I don't think I did a very good job answering your question. The, the informal answer is, they don't quite have a get-out-of-jail-free card, but they have a friends and family of the police force card, probably? Or something like that. To give you a little bit on the process, assuming one denies the 40B or makes it so difficult that the applicant has to withdraw, they have the right of appeal, right? Outside of the town, right, they go to the state, they appeal. In more cases than not, the developers win those appeals, and in more cases than not, the resulting approved project at, at the appeal is much more extensive than what was being discussed at the town level. To make it more specific as to this application, we have an application before us that is for 24 units we started in the low 30s. So in terms of percentage density, we've, we've reduced the density of this application significantly. We have a situation in terms of the physical location of homes along Old Oak and Bucket Road that honestly wasn't terrible the way it was initially proposed, but now is much more in keeping with the neighborhood, and is gonna be prettier when the rest of us drive by, is going to look a lot less like a 24-unit development. That is part of the, where they didn't have a get-out-of-jail-free card. If they had a get-out-of-jail-free card, this might be 50 units. This is in light of the statute, some people don't like the statute and think that the town bylaws should be the bylaws. In light of the statute, this is what, in my opinion, is a good 40B. The town's getting these units without letting someone build something that people are gonna drive by and say, how the hell did they get to build that? Unfortunately, given the statute, in my opinion, that's the bar between a good 40B and a bad 40B for the town.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course. Any other public questions or comments? Yes, please.
The plaintiff really had two options. One, of course, was the waiver of 52. The other is, we hope that the applicant, the landscape architect, will learn from the very worst mistake and increase their density in your buffer. One time they nod, they come, they clear everything, and then we all get here from the neighbors, and they have a great special back-up plan trees. We have a request that you plant 50 trees in your buffer. That's our only concern, is to increase your buffer between your names on Maple and whatnot, and some at a detriment to you when you build your, your project. So we had to increase, Seaside Citrus was a priority, so we moved some automatic, well, that could put trees in.
Yeah.
Buffering, yeah. And on Country Way, we're still saying that, but it becomes a lot more, you should go back and natural good debt.
So is planning proposing any more specifics as to where these 50 trees should go?
They were just as the in-between, on the buffer line, to make these decisions you can on both sides.
Sure, so where, I, I guess I'm, I'm gonna speak to the applicant, they'll certainly have a chance to respond, but I'm a little confused by saying 50 trees, because for the, the majority of running property line here, we, they're along wetland forests and undeveloped land, and so for them to throw 50 trees back there, it's not doing anyone any good. And on to the west, which is moving towards Norwell, there is an undevelopable buffer lot there, that is wetlands, which they don't own, but that neighbor presumably isn't going to complain.
Well, I'm a reader, everything, which we're gonna speak today, which is you have been finding that when the signs are cleared, and then the trees remain out left, and it becomes an issue for the butters. As a registered landscape architect, which our town planner is, I don't think a little whiskey is gonna break the bank. I advocate for additional buffering, and if it has to be conditioned at 15 additional places required, then I suggest that. We did that with Seaside, Situate, the residential compound on Country Way, and also the residential compound on Hillmark Road. But that's just something for her as a registered landscape architect.
So has the town planner seen the landscape plan?
Yes.
So are they, are they asking for more trees? I, I'm just trying to get clarification, I, I don't have a.
And recognizing that this wasn't your suggestion.
No, 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 no.
Appreciate, I'm coming.
Yeah, no, and that, so I'm just trying to understand, are they, for applicants, say, and you might.
I think that what happens is that this is, is when you walk back and you tend to be what looks like a very high forest, very often using a high forest, and you get in and create a lot of wooden trees, and then you look against, like, oh, you get trees, just to be very much a, and it helps a real big buffer between you and ordinary businesses.
No, I, 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 I understand the thinking behind it. I'm just trying to figure out, because I'm looking at this, and there's probably 50 trees on here.
I'm lost for words.
So I, that's what I'm trying to understand, is what is the ask? Is it compared to landscape plan L1 submitted February 7, 2023, is the request that anything A, differently done, or B, of what is being done, there be a higher density of planting?
She's asking that there be a higher density of planting.
Over this plan? So.
And she has to see the option.
Yeah, and honestly, I don't necessarily see space for 50 trees.
That's why I'm, that's why I'm confused.
But if you want to walk around, I'm just gonna say.
I understand.
If you look, it's like, there's a big space in here, I can see that, honestly.
Yeah.
We want to, and what happens is, is the English will get all the calls, but you said that we were gonna be screened, and it's one tree.
Well, so, again, that Seaside and Situate, and what, what are we, then Sanctuary?
Right.
I know that in, in the permitting of those, landscape buffers were a big area of discussion. And assurances maybe is the wrong word, but
Representation.
Representations were made by developers to a butters here, and, and what I expressed to the town planner today when I received the email. Buffering hasn't been a big concern here, and I think that's in part because of the nature of the neighborhood, the nature of these property lines and the property types that are above the development, also because this is 424 units on a single lot, this is actually not that dense. So honestly, I, I'm reluctant to ask the applicant to commit to anywhere near 50 additional plantings without some more specificity, I don't. Yeah, I.
Yeah, just, I just wanna point something out, because you're looking right at the, you're looking right at the landscape plan.
Yeah.
If you, you see the house that is depicted that's non-locus, that's the closest house that's depicted on this plan?
Yes.
Do you see the squiggly line that kinda goes around the house?
Yes.
That's the limit of clearing naturally right now, so everything closer to the project outside of, say, the house portion of that line is, is wooded area. So what we're, what we're, what we have here, and I was involved, I permitted both of those other projects, very different. They had, they had streets on all sides of them with homes, one after the other, after the other, backing right up to the property lot. This is completely different, and other than the fact that there really isn't much area for trees, and if you plant trees in the area that there is on this lot, you're going to reduce recreational space. And so when you have a project of this density, you know, the master plan concept is to facilitate recreational space as opposed to de-emphasize it. Then, so I just, I just wanted to point out, there's already a natural buffer for that home, and we're proposing to plant trees as well. So I think it's more than sufficient, and I'm pretty certain, without asking Mr. Lovendale, that we probably would not agree to that at this time.
Yeah, I think. I, no, 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 I would, thank you, we appreciate, and welcome, and hope for more early and often input from other town boards. I, message delivered, I, I think you've heard from the applicant, and I think that there, there might be another bite of the apple for, for the plan, for the planner to present some more specifics there.
Well, and then maybe, and then maybe a conversation and a, and a disconnect is what I'm hearing from Attorney Delisi and what I'm seeing on the plan, and, you know, there, in fact, there may be much more wooded area depending on where they're clearcut, where they're cutting, right, that, that may be maintained.
Yeah, well, I think, um.
That's, that's, exactly, so that's why I'm saying maybe the town planner doesn't, you know, if they're only cutting here and that's all being maintained, where, where do they, right, to?
Yeah.
Where are you gonna put, I mean, they're planting here, they're planting here, up against this house?
And, and we're gonna get a fence.
And there's a fence, and there's a wall, and there's a retaining wall.
And we don't have a four-story building or
Right, right.
or multiple attached townhomes up on a hill, like we, it's absolutely been an area of concern at some other 40Bs and larger density developments in town, and so I do understand why it's coming up here.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public with any questions or comments? Yes?
Can I just ask you to explain to others that are listening, where they're proposing, which was my question when I came in earlier, where they wanna put these radar type signs that they're gonna be on Old Oak and Bucket?
Oh, no, no, so, so.
Is that the town?
No, so that proposal was the traffic engineers that had been hired with respect to this project. That's where they would put them if they were going to put them. Fortunately or unfortunately, they don't necessarily get a vote. That's a town question, that's DPW and the Police Department. So yes, the traffic review engineers proposed one on this project's side of Old Oak and Bucket Road, probably 150 yards towards the rotary from the Maple intersection, and then one on the opposite side of Old Oak and Bucket Road, probably 150 yards towards the rotary from this project. It's, it looks great on the plan, it doesn't necessarily mean anything with respect to where the town might decide to actually put it.
So it's the town we go to?
It's the town, yeah, and any road signage or safety signage is going to be the town first, and then MDOT, Matt, the state, after that.
We just, we propose just a five inch.
Okay.
Wherever they're gonna put them, if they put them.
And they, they are a portable device, too.
Yes, so they can.
They can be, yes.
You'll have the initial placement, and if it turns out, they're gonna be watched. If it turns out that they should be relocated, be more efficient, then obviously it's not a deal that can happen very easily.
Anyone else? Okay. So now, I think it was Mr. Marshall brought up your letter regarding waivers, Attorney Delisi. And you and I have discussed this subsequent to the letter being submitted. I, when we initially got a list of waivers, I, I think I had expressed in the hearing that it was leaning maybe a little too far towards a list of every code section that you might need any modification of. A list of every code section that you might need any modification of. And that was a little too finite and maybe not specific enough in certain areas. And then I think, and I'll take as much blame as anyone. I think maybe the pendulum swung a little too far the other way. With some of the broad requests in this letter. And that's understandable, because one, I, I was sort of pushing you in this direction already, and also. Regardless of how it was drafted or done. Finalizing the plan comes first, before we know what waivers we need. Now that we are at or near the stage where we have a finalized plan. I think I'd like to, if it's all right with you and all right with the rest of the board, quickly run through. The waivers that you mentioned in your February seventeenth letter. And just, and please interrupt me or interject as we go through each of one. And Attorney Frytag as well, and I, I hope that you'll speak up in this section if you think there's an area where we might need more or less. I, I think this letter does a good job of identifying the, the types or general areas of where we need the waivers. And I'd like to talk about where maybe a broad stroke and a general waiver works and where we might need some more specificity. So, the first is on the second page. Your item number one in that italicized paragraph is from the Wetlands Protection Rules and Regulations. I think what we'll want to see. Is a more detailed list. Of the relief that you need from the Wetlands Protection Bylaw. I don't envision that necessarily as being. Which, is that four seventy or five twenty? Which one is that? Regardless, as Wetlands Protection Bylaw subsection one. This is what it says, this is what we're doing, this is exactly how we're doing it, this is why you should grant us the relief. Five twenty. I agree with your notion that we've approved the plans, we've addressed the plans against these bylaws. We shouldn't have to start that conversation again. I'm not looking for a memo on each subsection and why the relief should be granted. I do, however, think we need to find a median between us saying in a decision, you're good with five twenty? And saying, no, we need to analyze the relief you need in every subsection of five twenty. Does that make sense?
Yeah, uh, I think so.
So, I, I think five twenty is one of the areas of the code where we'd like to see that elaborated upon. What areas in subsection of five twenty are you in need of relief? If you want to put them into a group. That's fine, or say from its section, subsection three, eight, and eleven. These are addressed on the plan, these are, these were part of the peer review, and we asked that the board. Consider the application to be granted relief or to comply. Because I know in areas of that section, there's review that's required, determinations that are required. If we could put on paper that by virtue of approving the plan, the board is making that determination. I think that creates a better paper trail for relief from five twenty.
Okay.
Supplemental rules and regulations for disposal of sanitary sewage. I think exactly the same comment and approach applies there. That might even be a little bit broader of a stroke, since the system was so specifically reviewed by peer review. I think it's just gonna warrant a little proverbage in terms of the relief that we're granting in a decision. And then to tie it back to the plan.
And again, from my standpoint, let's be careful not to sweep in, sweep in things that aren't appropriate, right? I don't want to be giving relief to the whole sec, subs, to the whole section when. The dry cleaning subsection, I'm not giving you relief to, because you're not building a dry cleaner there, nor should you.
Yeah.
So, I, so things like that. I mean, just.
I agree.
Yeah, like it all.
And there's, there's only four sections of the health regulations that we identified in any of it.
Right, 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 yeah, that's what I'm saying, like.
And, and the couples would probably fall under exactly that category.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, so, so we list these sections where you need relief. Again, we might need a memo on each of those specific relief, but then saying that. We want the plan to satisfy review of that specific section and thereby grant the relief, I think is the way to go. That is going to plu- apply, that same approach, I think, is going to apply to sanitary sewage and stormwater regulations. I skipped over the regulations governing the subdivision of land. I think that's as simple as saying. Well, honestly, I, I think there's hardly any.
We're not regressing subdivisions.
If, if you don't need relief from that section, yeah, we, we discussed that.
Right.
Um, the demolition review bylaw. Where are we going with that? What relief do you need?
So, there's a, uh, provision in that bylaw that's basically, uh, I think it's a. If it's determined to be a historically significant structure, which this probably would be.
Mm-hmm.
Then, uh, there is a demolition delay imposed.
Yeah.
You can't demolish it for a certain period of time.
Yes.
And I want to say it's one year.
Yeah.
On the date of the determination.
Yes.
Of whether it's historically significant. So Bob would make, well, the. The Historical Commission makes a determination, sends it to Bob. Bob formalizes it, one year passes, and that's it. In a practical reality, if we ask them for the determination tomorrow. Um, and they said it is historically significant, by the time we got to actually putting a shovel in the ground. The demolition delay period probably would, would.
Yeah.
Go by. But there is no reason to go through that procedure. So, it's the only reason why I'm asking that question.
No, no, wait, ask and answer, makes perfect sense.
It's coming down whether it's historically significant or not, and, and we defer to the board, so whether you can take it down.
And I think we actually mentioned this at the first hearing, and we discussed that. I think everyone's sufficiently on notice, given that we have a well-publicized forty B in town, and there was ample opportunity for folks to object.
Right, right.
So, I, sounds like a one-liner in terms of relief on your final basis.
Yeah, as far as zoning is concerned, there are provisions of site plan. This is essentially a site plan, so we would ask for the waiver of the site plan review, because you're doing it.
Yeah.
And then there's water resources protection, which is section five twenty, we talked about.
I think five twenties, good, well, we'll go back into. Yeah, it looks like we mentioned that twice, the Wetlands Protection.
Yeah.
That one, just a little more specificity as to what sections and.
What's half. Right, and then there was just, I just, from zoning, I just asked also. Front yard setback, which we discussed earlier tonight, and the reason why, side yard setback, and lot width.
Yeah.
Lot width is a big one, because, um, at one point in the middle of the lot, it's not of the width it's required to be.
Where, where?
And then I address it in the lot.
Yeah, but, and those, I think those, I think those are specifically saying, yeah, that, you know, we want on those. I'd like to have it here, I think that's fine, right? Yeah, it's very clear, and that's.
So, kind of what I'm envisioning, the board is asking is basically, give me a paragraph for each of these regulations as to. What specifically within the regs you're looking for and why you think it's not necessary, why you designed the project. That meets the spirit of what the provisions are geared towards regulating, so to speak. Like, for instance.
More the first one than the second one?
Yeah, okay.
I think the why has been covered. None of these requests for relief are anything that's catching us off guard. We've discussed them over the course of the hearing.
Right.
And our review of the plan.
So, you just want an inventory of waivers?
I think I just want an inventory that's, that's a little, that's a bit more itemized than this paragraph.
So, you realize that we've given that to you already?
I want something in between those two. That was the list of, in, in my opinion, almost every section of our bylaw. And then we, and then we, we over honey, I shrunk the kids it here.
Yeah.
I, I think we gotta come, we gotta find a happy meeting.
Oh, got it.
Um. The additionally specific waivers from dimensional setbacks, I think that is more of a broad stroke. One or two sentences and our approval of the plan is going to cover that. Lot width being the same. I, uh. And then your, your last page is setbacks again. I think putting setbacks, subdivision, and lot width, dimensional requirements in a. In a single paragraph makes sense. I think everyone's aware of what we're approving and not approving there. I, I think just a little more, really what I'm looking for is for a member of the public or someone looking back at this proceeding. Without the benefit of watching the fifteen or twenty hours of hearing tapes. To say, oh, the twenty twenty-three Board of Appeals didn't just grant a blanket waiver of section five twenty. They granted a waiver of these sections of five twenty for these reasons.
Right.
And then.
And that's.
Stormwater, wastewater, water protection is where I think we need to.
Beef it up.
Yeah, and where we need some explanation.
Okay.
Not, I don't need you to start from zero on a memo of why you should get the relief. Just an explanation of the relief that you're getting and why they were approaching.
Yeah, I, I think that's a reasonable request, and I will honor that.
Fantastic.
Um, it's really a question of procedure and process, right? How, like, you take that if you want.
Sure, sure. So, we, we discussed what might work. I, I discussed with town council, and we think it is, will be the first that the, that the board is hearing it, is. Given that we don't have that sort of more final waiver list in front of us yet. And given that the applicant has expressed that they would feel more comfortable closing the hearing. With at least something close to a draft decision being seen by both sides.
Which includes conditions of approval.
That's ru- right, which, which includes the, the whole thing. That it wouldn't unfortunately be appropriate to close the hearing tonight. The plan that I'm thinking, and I want to know what you are thinking, Bob, you included. Is that. We vote on the approval of the plan in concept tonight, pending our review of the final list of waivers. That we vote. That the board, through myself. The applicant, through whomever they wish to include. Town council and the engineers, to the extent we want to include them. Engage in a breakout work session. To try to scrub that list of waivers and incorporate them into a draft decision. Prior to the next meeting.
And then the next meeting, present the draft decision.
That.
And throw it on.
That that draft.
Presented to us prior to, but to the.
Yes, to the larger. Exactly. That that draft decision. Be submitted.
Right.
For the file.
Right.
In advance of the next hearing, let's say in a week in advance of the next hearing.
Right.
So, the board members have an opportunity to review it? So that the public, to the extent they want to, has an opportunity to review it? Not so that the board has an opportunity to discuss it.
No.
Because that would, that's for an open meeting and we'll discuss it at the hearing.
Right.
And then at the next and hopefully final hearing, we discuss that draft decision. We add any additional input, so some things may change in there, but they are hopefully minor. The public potentially has one more opportunity to ask some questions about that drafted decision. And then we vote on that decision with any amendments that may come up in that hearing.
Sure, yeah, I think that works.
My thinking is that we should vacation month aside. Be able to pull that off within the next month.
Yeah, just don't do it during school vacation.
Well, yeah, and so that's probably gonna make it hard and it's gonna end up skipping into May. Um. But that's the plan.
Right.
Any questions or comments or concerns on that plan?
I agree. Do we have to roll this on the line?
I think, I would like to, I'd like everyone to consider everything I just said. A, a motion. Can you, you'll be able to paraphrase that enough for the me, for the minutes? Or you want me to give it to you one more time? Think you got it?
Okay.
All right. I think we consider that a motion, including most importantly, the approval of the plan. Approval of the plan in concept, pending review of the draft decision and finalized list of waivers.
I'll say the motion.
All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Hi. Okay. So, that's unanimous, and that's how we're going to proceed. The question becomes. Timing and logistics for a breakout session and timing and logistics for.
The final.
A follow-up here.
With the. The confusion with the breakout session, it's, it's a, it's a concept that I, that I like.
Okay.
Um, uh, it, it's, should we. Aim at having a draft decision before the breakout session or after the breakout session is the question in my mind. And the only reason why I ask it is because typically applicants, um. Have input traditionally with the ZDA on the draft decision.
Yep.
So, um, I, it's just really a timing issue.
I. I don't have a strong opinion on whether or not we have a draft decision for the breakout session or not. You and Attorney Frytag tell me, other than the more polished list of waivers. Uh, we didn't discuss a lot of conditions.
You didn't.
Here, or. Uh, we, by virtue.
A lot of the conditions were kind of incorporated into the plan.
Into the revised plans.
Yeah, alright.
So, I, I think. Bob, feel free to chime in. I think other than waivers, a comprehensive permit's gonna talk about construction. It's going to talk about demolition, but the demolition's relatively minor on this site.
Yep.
Site preparation.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, roadway.
I mean, you're on that one, right?
Yeah, there's a fairly typical list that's developed for subdivisions.
Yeah, it's pretty typical.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't be surprised if you needed to go outside that, you know, listing.
Yeah, that list is.
The same kind of thing with planning board.
Yeah, that list is, is tailored towards the subdivision rules and regulations, though, and I really want to avoid a lot of the. What I see to be. Overly burdensome and sometimes confusing language. Um, I'll tell you what, why don't, how about we suggest trying to do a breakout session? Before the end of this calendar month. Say the last week in April, I'm gonna.
Last week in March.
Last week in March, I'm gonna try and have a waiver list. Uh, that letter to you, uh, hopefully by the end of next week. And, um. I can collaborate with Janine and Bob on, uh, prior comprehensive permit decisions and what typically go into those conditions of approval. And also look at some subdivision ones and try and cobble together a draft, a working draft document. Um, and which could be refined after the, uh, working session.
Sure.
That is, I think, what, that would make the best sense.
When are we looking at for a working session?
So, we could do it on the, uh, week of the twenty-seventh, um, and. I don't have any public hearings on any of those evenings, if you wanted to in the evening, and if you want to do it during the work day, that's fine too. Because it's not, it's not a public hearing, right?
That's right.
So, it'd be, I would get together with town council, I'm sure, uh, Mark and your engineer, probably. And maybe one of the members of the board.
Sure.
Would be my guess.
Yep.
And Bob.
Yeah.
That'd be pretty much it. So, we could probably do it during the day.
We can do it during, during the day, working from home quite often and.
So, why don't, why don't, why don't I, um. Maybe we can just kind of coordinate that by looking at our schedules.
Yes.
We can circulate an email tomorrow and try and get it together.
That sounds good. If we pull that off in March or even if it goes poorly and we pull that off in the first part of April. When do we want to try to continue this hearing to?
Um, if in school vacation week, I, I would suggest the last week in April.
The last week in April.
You typically have a zoning hearing on the.
We have a zoning meeting at school vacation.
Thir- Thursday, right?
Yes, zoning meeting is twenty. The zoning means the twenty.
Of school vacation. Well, and I have two two matters that are gonna be on that.
Oh.
Easy easy matters, I think, but the point is is that if you wanted to try and, depending on your workload. You might be able to do it on that hearing, but that's school vacation.
I am not here for school vacation. They got me going, I don't know, yeah.
Oh, you're. Believe me, I'm.
Okay.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm reticent to do it before school vacation.
I think so too.
I feel like it's too rushed. So I I I'm open to entertaining anything after school vacation.
The twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth is a Wednesday.
Wednesday is usually a good day for this.
I'm not here the following week after school vacation, I don't know if that would pose a problem.
That is the week that we're proposing it.
Right.
They say.
One of us isn't necessarily appropriate.
Perfect. That Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, is I happened to notice on my calendar Administrative Professionals Day.
So we outran Jenny the cake. Should I do?
That that works for me, if the room's available. That's a decentable date.
The town council will be open, so the room's available.
All right. Kevin, that general plan work for you?
Yes.
Depending us trying to find a a date at the end of the month to get together?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we, that was the twenty-sixth that we decided on of April. That we continue this hearing to April twenty-sixth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Hearing is being continued to April twenty-sixth. Hopefully in this select board hearing room, but that will be confirmed on the ZBA's website. And as we've discussed, the plan is for myself, Bob, the applicant, councils and engineers to meet before then to try to get the ball rolling or get the ball mostly the way up the hill on a decision. Fantastic.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, I would uh I'm gonna make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.